Some work on in the meeting's order. If we complete and the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. I'd like us to do both of these.
Okay, board members. Commissioner Mr. Rere.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Here.
Inspection of service, Michael Munn.
You don't have to call me.
No, that's just the commission.
Just this.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'd like to move to approval of the meetings from the meeting minutes from Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at five ten P M.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes for August sixteenth. Have you voted on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Hmm. Oh, it's not.
We're motion for the minutes.
Uh, we would like to move to a table matter that we had, um, and this is for liquor license for Samorella LLC, um. I.
I'll make a motion and put it up off the table.
Uh, second.
Motion was proposed by Commissioner Rere.
Hmm.
To table it.
Yep. Untable, yes.
Untable. Untable. Have you voted on that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, uh, commissioners. Um, so if you, uh, I guess just to refresh, um, we were before you about a month ago, um, on the application of Samorella LLC, which is the owner of Sunnyside Cafe on Broadway, um, to, uh, obtain a full liquor license, um. Uh, during that meeting, um, Commissioner Santiago raised some issues about occupancy and fire code issues, which, um, I, I respect and understand why he was bringing them up. But I think that those issues are, um, issues that are addressed in a different forum. Like, so for example, we have plans in place, but, um, those plans, the, the work cannot start until, uh, we apply for permits from the building department, special services, fire department, policy, and those departments are gonna put my client through the render on, on code issues, occupancy, sprinklers, everything. And then I will also mention, and I was hoping to have him here tonight, he got tied up, uh, dirt on another case, but the, the engineer for this project, uh, who drafted the plans is Marcos Devers, who's, uh, one of the best around. Uh, he designed, um, the new Mamawana's restaurant and oversaw the construction of that. It's a beautiful facility, uh, completely up to date in terms of the code. So Mister, um, uh, Mister Devers knows what he's doing. Uh, Samorella LLC has hired the best and, um, all we're looking for is approval from this board, um, to move forward to the A B C C. Uh, there is an existing restaurant now, which I think everyone's familiar with, probably all been there for breakfast or lunch, um, and until the addition is actually, uh, goes from planning to actual development, um, my client would like to at least be able to start serving his patrons in the existing diner. So, so we'd like to move forward and hopefully get the approval. Again, I was hoping Mister Devers would be here to answer any technical questions if the board still has them about the build out and, and how that's gonna work, but, uh, he, he was, he got tied up. Um, he may walk in any minute, but I think at this point, uh, probably not gonna have him here. So, um, with that in mind, I think otherwise, uh, it's a very strong application, uh, this, this client has been in business for many, many years, um, without issue, um, well-respected establishment and, um, you know, just trying to compete with some of the other, um, you know, breakfast and lunch places that have sprung up around the valley that are serving, you know, drinks with breakfast and so, um, that's it, that's his plan.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, when, before this matter was tabled, we did have, um, a blueprint of the expansion.
Mm-hmm.
And so, just for a clarification, what we will be, well, this is a question is a liquor license for the current existing space. And then.
We've applied for, uh, we've applied for a license for the expanded restaurant. Um, we understand that until the restaurant is actually expanded, uh, the A B C C is, is not going to grant a license for a non-existing establishment. So, um, if we get past this board, um, and we move to the A B C C, at that point, um, I guess my clients can have to make a decision, uh, based upon what this board says, move forward and start constructing, or maybe put that on hold and only, uh, seek the license at the next level for the existing, uh, layout. So, um, so that's it. At a bare minimum, we'd like to get the approval of this board to, to be able to serve alcohol in the, uh, the existing establishment. It's a little bit of a, you know, it's.
Yeah.
I haven't had this type of a case before where you've got, you've, you've got a plan to expand, but we haven't expanded yet. So if the board's not comfortable with granting the license for the expanded restaurant, if you would at least grant it for the existing, we could come back at a later date, I suppose, whatever the board's comfortable with, if that's the only remaining issue.
I have a question. If we approve it, just for the, the writers now, you will come back in here to change your, um, what do you call it, the, the plan of the restaurant and everything else. It has to be updated, it has to be a blueprint of the side of the restaurant, from what I understand. So you have to come back out in here anyways to approve the layout, okay? And then we could probably approve it then to, to expand the license to that location.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Ju- yeah, just a point of information, Special Services has, um, vetted this application through the other boards, uh, we're well aware of the layout of the plan and, uh, we would be happy, uh, from a building department perspective, to support any flexibility that you're willing to grant the applicant, uh, whether it be approving the whole thing and, uh, later vetting it for the, the occupancy. I think the entire plan was given to the zoning board for approval, if I, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
So it's, um, it is out there, it's also, I believe, in our system. So whatever the board's pleasure is, but we're more than happy to be flexible to encourage this small business to, uh, do what it needs to do to thrive.
Okay.
Captain Delaney.
Um, if they receive the license, the fire department will conduct a three or four inspection to make sure everything is safe and compliant.
One more question. You can't, you know, we, we can't approve the license for the, uh, for the place that's not open yet, right?
I, I think you can, uh, commissioner, but I think ultimately the license cannot be issued. So in other words, your approval tonight, uh, only takes us to the next level. We go to the A B C C, they do their more in-depth, uh, vetting of, of, of my client. And then, uh, if the A B C C approves it, then we've gotta come back, as Captain Delaney said, there are all sorts of, and Mister Armando, there are all sorts of inspections at the, uh, uh, building department level and fire level. So I, I think, I think you can approve the expanded restaurant, but the license cannot issue until that restaurant is actually expanded. So it's kind of a, you know, a chicken and egg sort of a thing. Uh, my client doesn't wanna go ahead and start building a new restaurant if he doesn't know that this board is gonna be behind him. Uh, and by giving him the, the green light to do that, uh, he would then start the construction and would not be able to get the license in hand until he's done with this construction.
Just a point of information, if it's helpful to you, I, I think, uh, procedurally you would be issuing a license, but we would, as the building department, we would commission the occupancy for license, for use of serving alcohol, which we would not do, of course, until the construction plans were finished and everything was in order and Captain Delaney and Commissioner Pollo do three or four inspection.
I just wanted to know, this board, so I'm concerned, he's out to help people, but not hurt people.
Yeah.
And, um, I'll, I want to go along with just the restaurant, the way it is now. You'll have to come back as far as doing anything else after that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion and we approve it just for the presidential patient as, as it is right now.
I have, kind of, we, one, before we go to that, I'm trying to, just one question. Will this keep you all from moving forward with your plan? Is that, will there be an issue with you guys coming back to us with the expanded plan, which I'd like to see?
Yeah, it's, um. You know, uh, it's gonna force my client, I guess, to make some financial decisions.
I, I think, I think you guys want, I'm approving it for the location as it is now.
Yeah.
I understand.
Now, the other part, you will have to come back.
And what is the, uh, if you don't mind me asking, what is the concern about, because we've given you detailed plans, um, and again, I've, 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 I've stated that we've hired a great civil engineer who's done other restaurants liquor.
I grant that, I thought you, that's what you just wanted, was to grant the license for the place rated as it is now.
No, no, if, a- as a last resort. Uh, the preference is to, is to get this board's approval to go ahead and be able to do the expansion of the restaurant, which is the goal. Um, it might not happen right away, uh, and if that is the case, then, uh, as Mister Armando indicated, we'd never get the occupancy to open up that, that extended restaurant, but he could open up the, uh, or he could start serving in the, the existing diner.
Yes.
But, but it gives, you giving us the full approval gives us that flexibility to then go to that next level and fulfill all of the building, fire code, and other requirements for a modern, uh, restaurant.
Well.
And that would be the preference, 'cause it's, you know, the, these, the process here is very expensive, it's time-consuming, you've got all sorts of application fees to come back and, uh, do, do it again, so.
Whether you make it, what if we were to make a motion that will allow you to proceed with the goal, the whole plan, but you cannot serve liquor until you get everything done?
One area. I think that's a great, uh, compromise.
Uh, just for, uh, point of information, it would be, I would suggest maybe it would be appropriate to condition upon receiving, um, uh, the, or upon the occupancy being commissioned by the, the building commissioner.
Well, but you can serve liquor now in the old.
Sure, yeah.
That's what I, I, I'd be granted that, I, I, yeah. So, the motion being, do we approve your plan?
Okay.
You cannot serve liquor here until everything's fully approved by the fire department and everything else, but you can serve liquor in the old part.
I li- I like that. I like it.
Think of the clarification, I just wanna make sure.
We'll probably have to clarify that motion for the clerk.
Yeah.
So.
I got it.
So it's, to, the motion is, I, I just wanna make sure I have it too. So the motion is to approve the, the liquor license, however the condition is, alcohol shall not be served in a space that's not commissioned for occupancy.
Correct.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rere, put a motion and, uh, the motion and.
Did you second the motion?
I second the motion, yes.
Commissioner Rere, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote on it?
Yes.
Two votes, zero, the motion pass.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, I need a voter.
Yes, please. Okay.
Do you have another? We weren't first, we're, we're, uh, we got Jackman Supermarket.
Did you wanna take that out of order while there?
No, they're here, I'll just take it.
They're already here, we should take it, yeah, it's fine.
Meeting once again, oh, do you need to call the?
I do have a question, it's like, do we need to take this out of order, to make a motion?
You could do that if you'd like to, we'll do that in a motion.
So I'd like to formally, um, move item five, which is Jackman Supermarket Corp., um, is applying for a general liquor license, restaurant and retail license. Um, I'd like to move it out of order. I'd like to make a motion for that.
Um, I'll make a motion to move it out of order.
Second, thank you.
The motion was put on the table to move the item number five to bring up to number two. Have you opposed that?
Yes.
The motion pass.
Thank you.
To the floor.
Okay, thank you again, commissioners, um, uh, I'm here, uh, Brian Vargan, uh, one twenty two Justice Street, Nando Mass, on behalf of, uh, Jackman Supermarket Corp., with me tonight, my associate Marisol Rodriguez, and my client, uh, one of the officers of the, uh, Jackman Supermarket Corp., Juan Fajardo. Um, this is a, uh, Jackman, uh, Jackman's Market is, uh, located at the corner of South Broadway and Salem Street, technically one ninety-nine Salem Street, right across from St. Patrick's Church. Um, I think most everybody's familiar with Jackman's Market, uh, very popular, um, uh, grocery store and, uh, also serving, um, uh, fried chicken and other, you know, meals. Um, and, uh, what we are seeking, uh, tonight from the board is approval to start selling, uh, beer and wine, um, as a, you know, a package, uh, store, um, off-premises beer and wine. Uh, we've been to the zoning board, um, they, they approved us and, um, you know, we, we d- uh, last I checked, um, there was, there was a license available. I don't know the current status of that, but I believe there is at least one, uh, wine and malt, um, off-premises license available. Um, I've heard other things, but the document that I reviewed, which I think was the, 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 um, the la- last quarter report from the A B C C indicated that there was at least one available, so, um, and again, uh, this, uh, a long time, um, you know, Lawrence, uh, proprietor here and a great, uh, family-run business, um, and I think it makes great perfect sense, uh, for, you know, the folks of that neighborhood who like to shop there for their groceries and, and get a nice, uh, take-home meal, uh, to be able to also, you know, get a six, six-pack or a bottle of wine. And that's really all we're, we're looking for here, um, tonight.
Uh, my own information or Mike?
Hello, everyone.
I don't know where to ask for a liquor license available.
I think, I think no of you, we're having here. So generally, we would give you that information, um, just given the circumstances, we would just have a changing of the clerk, what I would suggest you do, I, I believe we do.
Yeah.
If for some reason we go in, if you'd like to, obviously, we'd have to, you wouldn't even have to make a commission because of, uh, that condition, sorry, because if we didn't have it, you wouldn't be able to get past the A B C C. So we'll, we'll bear by that and, um, I'll speak with Antonio, um, in turn of the week to, to get that information.
So you, uh, do us a favor next meeting, do, uh, if possible, give us a list of what's available.
Absolutely.
So we, you know, approve something like, I guess, there's a couple of people with a license this time.
Yeah. We'll get you that information. We recently received an increase in licenses with the, the quarter this past year, so we had two more available than we, um, did in the past, but we'll, we'll verify that. I apologize again for the changing of our clerks, um, I haven't brought Antonio up to speak with that yet.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
My question is, uh, there's a problem with traffic over there, it's a bad corner, you know that, okay?
Yeah.
And I just hope that people are gonna stop and double park, run in and get their beer and come out, you know what I mean? And it is now, they run in and get their chicken coming.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it, it's, it's a busy place, but, uh, when you have a great establishment, uh, it's sometimes that stuff happens. I, I, I don't think it's become a safety issue, Mister Laird, but maybe you obviously come from a different.
I live, I live, I live in that area, but, uh, when I go by the church sometimes, it, yeah, you're trying to get out of the lights and the cars that double park or try to get out of the parking spot because of the traffic going up.
Yeah.
But I mean, I know a lot of people just stop, park there, go in to get their chicken, 'cause they, I hear nothing about raving, they're raving about their chicken.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great store and a great, uh, place to do it.
In and out, and, but, but I have no problem with anything else there.
Uh, the, the fire department is familiar with the business, it is close to our ladder four station, um, we recently did an inspection there and everything is in compliance.
It, no real comments other than I'm hungry right now. That's, I just think.
Let's go.
We'd, uh, we'll, you know, continue to conduct inspections and, you know, concerns with it.
So as long as we in fact do have this license available, which will confirm.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion. Yeah.
And I, I, um, I guess I would just ask, uh, in the event that, um, there isn't, there is no license available for the type that we've applied for, um, is the procedure still that, uh, the first person that, that conditionally approved would be next in line if one would come up, or do, do you know how that works? I, I think it varies from municipality to municipality, but my understanding was that Lawrence had sort of a waitlist, whoever gets approved is first in line for the next one to come in, but I'd throw that out there for.
Yeah, it, I don't know of any codified procedure like that, so I, I believe it would be in your discretion, um, something that may, we could consider codifying in the future.
Well. There's one license, there's two people right now, so I would say there's two people with the license, there's nowhere to say we have two licenses, right?
Yeah, I, I guess if there's two new applicants, there's a chance we do have two new licenses. I, I wish I had the information, I, I didn't see this one coming, and again, Antonio was new to this, so I would suggest if you, uh, if it's something that you need to, um, approve on the condition that we have two, but should we not, um, condition and formulate some sort of procedure and give it more thought and continue the matter, if we don't have two, obviously, if we have two and there's two applications and there's no problem, yeah, but it's, right now it's in your discretion because there is no rule, um, on the matter.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'll make a motion that if there's a license available, approve it. If not, put you to talk to the list.
I second that.
Okay, Commissioner Rere, put a motion to approve the license if it is, if it is available, if you're not, like you said, you better wait for the next one.
Can I, I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify this, especially where they made you two, um, because you, you, you may have to make a similar motion, so if you're making a motion to put this applicant at the top of the list.
It'll be seconded.
Are you in fact saying that you're gonna make them number one, or is this something you're gonna?
Make him number one.
Okay.
Juggling number one?
Yep.
Yes.
And then, uh, Sunnyside, uh, some other?
No, that's a different.
No, that's different.
That's a different.
I, who is Mister, Mister Armando, who's the second, uh, client for this type of?
So this would be for a general.
Uh, what we have here is, uh.
So, no.
I didn't see another one.
No, I didn't see another off-premise, I.
Yeah.
Liquor license, it says liquor license on the eighty-nine South Broadway.
I think that's off-premises.
That says on Peru, the restaurant.
Yeah. It's a different.
See, all it says here, mine is liquor license, so.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a transfer.
So it's, it's different, I say.
Yeah.
We could, we could still go with this process, but still codify a process for this now that it's brought to our attention. But for now, we can prove this.
Yeah, we'll go with that, to the, to what we did, okay?
Yeah, so motion.
Open that as one.
Commissioner Rere, second by Commissioner Morales, how do you vote? Please stand down.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Thank you.
Sorry to take up too much time for the questions.
Now, it's all, all good, all right. I appreciate it, actually.
I have many questions. Yeah. Good night. Thank you.
Good night. Outside we have.
Do you guys want me to call an extra?
I gotta, I gotta.
Okay, thank you.
You got J J?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's outside. So, so someone goes here.
Jay, you're the hostess.
I'll see.
Uh, for the record, could you state your name for this, because I'm just waiting here?
Uh, my name is Antonio Martinez.
And.
Me, what, in Spanish?
Claro. Eh, no puede darle saber por qué usted está aquí hoy?
Bueno, yo estoy aplicando para una licencia de bolsa.
I'm applying for a wholesale license. Um.
That's the reason.
That's the reason. Do we have any questions for you?
This is for South Automobiles, right?
Estoy para vender, eh, baseball.
Sí.
Forty-nine Blanchard Street, right?
Sí.
It's a pa- uh, like a half a stop, right?
Es como una ofis- una oficina.
Oficina, sí.
Un bilingue.
Sí, un bilingue of oficinas, la Blanchard Street.
What floor are you gonna be on?
En qué pisos te vas a estar?
En el piso dos.
And how many cars you gonna be carrying there?
Y cuántos carros vas a tener?
No, eh, eh, um, los carros yo tengo, eh, donde parquearon, you know, en mi propiedad.
These are the cars I have them to park in my property. Pero tú, último.
Puede ser como cuatro, seis carros, una carro. Por si puedo tener hasta esa cantidad.
Perdón, me preste que solamente para vender online, que solamente usted está pidiendo permiso para el espacio de la oficina.
Sí, sí, o se llama. Sí, claro, porque no tiene, tiene.
Just translate what you just said.
So, so Antonio just, uh, just told, um.
Antonio.
Antonio, so please explain that this is to sell cars online, um, and have the office space and not to sell cars in person. And so he's agreeing and saying, yeah, we'll only have cars that are accessible, like, to park, to go into the business.
Just a, a point of history for the commissioners, uh, this is a, this building has historically had many wholesale licenses attached to it for whatever reason, word of mouth, so there are currently several business owners who have this wholesale license. And again, uh, to the board, to the applicant, they're not allowed to have cars on purpose, but there are several, uh, offices left this.
So if he's, from what I understand, and he's just doing some cars online, and they're not gonna be stored there.
Para que pueda entender, solamente van a vender los carros en las redes sociales, no le van a atender.
No, no.
En presente. Physical, physically, no. No.
So, I think.
Eso es lo que quería saber. Eh, yo no tengo ninguna pregunta por ahora, gracias.
No questions, we're familiar with the, uh, the building and the office space that they're, that we occupy.
Que me pregunta que él está, eh, él sabe, él sabe de su oficina, sabe lo que está, se está aplicando.
Just, uh, from, Inspector Services as well as police who's down here tonight, just make sure you're familiar with the rules and regulations for your record-keeping and your hosting of your hours and that type of thing.
Eh, para, para el propósito de la oficina de, of Special Services, eh, que por favor tengan al día las regulaciones de, de cuando van a poner sus obras, para que la persona sepa, y también que estén al día con todo lo que se quiere, tener su, su, los récords, su, de su site.
Sí, claro.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve this license.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I will second it.
Okay. Commissioner Blair, put a motion to approve the license for, uh, wholesale office space only, and second by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Blair, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Sí, yo tengo una pregunta con usted.
Claro. Y salió el paso.
Yo, yo, um, yo también trabajo. Y yo, y yo, um, prácticamente yo voy a operar mi propio negocio, voy a inveta- a instalar. Entonces, eh, la, la, la idea de ese negocio es, eh, que yo pueda también. Entonces, eh, la, la, la idea de ese negocio es, eh, que yo pueda también comprar vehículos para, para revénderselo. Por ejemplo, mi hermano tiene negocio en la República Dominicana de carros. Entonces ellos necesitan tener la manera de poder comprar carros, quien tiene la subasta, pero nos tienen, tenemos que tener negocio para poder hacer.
Okay, see, so he's just clarifying that the reason he has the business is because he, he essentially has the network to be able to, to sell businesses in the community and he wanted us to know that. So his brother is selling cars, but they have come away to do it, and so this is why he's doing it, and that he already has a full-time job. So, yeah, good.
Okay.
Sí.
Eso es lo que yo quiera saber porque.
So, eh, la pregunta básicamente es si él está, yeah, si él es, eh, tiene que estar o tiene que tener alguien en la oficina en the daily basis.
So the question is.
Tengo que tener personal.
Oh, he's asking us if he has to have someone there in a daily basis and.
In the office, since he's the only one who's, who's gonna operate the business, he's the only one that is gonna operate the business.
Yeah, I believe in the, the requirements that he could look up, that there has to be posted hours of, of so many hours throughout the week.
Yeah, el requeri, el requeri, requerimiento es que hay, hay, la necesidad, necesitamos, eh, que usted tenga en la puerta para que el público vea las horas que van a estar presentes, las horas de operación.
Okay.
We would be happy to send someone to, if he wants to come to inspection services, we can work with Officer Kenner as well, if he has trouble locating regulations.
Si, si necesita recursos para conectarse con el departamento de inspección, se puede conectar con nosotros y lo conectamos al oficial a ver, eh, del departamento de policía. Para que lo ayude a asegurar, asegurarse que usted tenga todo el requisito para tener su negocio.
Okay, muy bien. Yo, yo creo que yo tengo todos, eh, bien en todo, que mis requisitos, yo tengo todo, solo me falta la reunión.
Okay. Okay. Okay, he says that he thinks he's, he's ready, so he just needs to come to the meeting.
Okay.
You're also, um, in the.
Hello. Entonces, la, eso, eh, el permiso, eso me lo miran por correo como eso.
Urcol, te llamamos.
Okay, muy bien, muy bien.
He's asking if he's gonna.
Ah, muchas gracias. Buenas tardes.
Gracias a usted. Yes. Slade.
Last, and the last.
Is that one available?
Yes, please, thank you.
No, I'm tired.
Huh?
I'm tired today. Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hello.
Answer's no.
Yes, no.
Okay.
Oh. For the record, can you state your name, your business, and the purpose of you being here with us today?
Alright, so my name is Gijamena Martinez, who I'm known as Gigi Martinez. Um, the name of the business is Sazón Peru, located in eighty-nine South Broadway Street. And the business has been a restaurant for almost four years. I just, um, acquired the entire, um, real estate property and I stayed with the restaurant. So the reason for me being here is because I'm, we trying to do a liquor license transfer to my name.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Where is the license for another, eh?
There is a license here.
There is a standing there, right?
I don't have any immediate questions on this, um, Captain Zalini?
Um, no, the fire department is again familiar with eighty-nine South Broadway, is their neighbors again to our ladder four station. And, um, we've always done three or four inspections there, they've always been in compliance. I recently stopped by there and did an inspection and everything was, was good.
Director Ramon?
Inspection Services has no concerns, just obviously update everything else with your ownership and congratulations with your ownership.
I don't have anything else other than congrats, this is a big deal, it's awesome.
I'll make a motion with Robert and.
I second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Blair, you make your motion to approve the transfer of your liquor license to Peru, Sazón Peru. And seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Blair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, two votes, two zero, motion pass, congratulations.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Ortiz and accountant for Sazón Peru.
Uh-huh.
Um, I just, are you guys gonna follow up with the ABCC, um, gonna send that out, or we have to get in touch with them?
That's a great question for transfers, don't we?
Yeah, that, there may.
Normally you guys do, well, uh, last, last one I did was when Pat was here. I don't remember, I mean, it's been a lot of changes now, now you guys have everything online, it's totally different.
We send records to the ABCC.
The ABCC, and they will call, they will call me normally.
I don't know if you have any other obligation, so I, I would ask you to check in with the ABCC.
Okay.
If there's anything else on there and that they need from you, we report any changes or any new licenses to the ABCC.
Alright, okay, I get in touch with them tomorrow, and they said that everything was passed, um, and you send the trans, the li, the new license. Do you guys upload it, or we have to pick it up here?
Or we'll call you, or we'll call the leisure.
They. Okay.
The process after, and this may.
Alright.
I don't, I don't think the ABC will give it away, I think we have to be approved by the ABC.
It has to be.
It has to, so it has to be approved, then they'll, they'll give you a license.
Okay, awesome, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready, you ready?
What?
You're ready?
This was great, right?
Yes.
Before we start. Before we start with the next one?
Yeah.
And there is a painting, painting from there.
Okay.
And, uh, Carmen told me that they can come to the meeting, and then, if they got approved, they, she has to make the painting. She have everything.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hey.
Hi, could you all please, uh, state your name from the record, um. Tell us about your business and why you're here today.
Yeah, uh, my name is Yuching.
Yeah, you can say, you're good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, uh, he's the partner, Xiajun.
My name is Xiajun Hu.
Hi.
Or you can call me Sean, I'll be there for you.
Jason, 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 Sean. Yeah, yeah, so we're opening up a Korean barbecue place.
Yeah.
It's the, it's the grill inside of middle of the table, and then you cook by yourself, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Like a Japanese hibachi style.
Before the restaurant was the riga grill, the same, same thing?
It was riga grill, yeah, same thing.
Okay.
I think they were, I think they were doing business for like, what, ten years before, ten, sixteen years, but they out during COVID.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we found out, I found out this place.
Yeah.
So I was like, you know, you know what, I'm gonna buy this place, and then, cause I, I managed a Korean barbecue in Boston for eleven, for eleven years. And then during COVID, I'm like, you know, why start something by myself?
Yeah.
And then since, you know, a lot of my regulars from Lo, from New Hampshire, from the area, we don't really have a lot of entertainments, you know, for, like, like, you know, this kind of things, this type of things. People tired of driving to Boston all the time.
Yeah.
And then they were like, you know, if you could do something here, we would be, you know, more than happy, we don't have to travel Boston all the time. So, that's basically my main reason why I chose very far from, you know, the city, come to this place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't have questions anymore.
You're open now, right?
Oh, yeah, we're waiting for you guys to let me open.
You're gonna, you're gonna, so you just bought the building then, right?
No, we're not the landlord, but we bought the business. We bought the business from the previous owner.
They bought the business from the previous owners, but they're not the landlord.
They were not the landlord, there are two businesses, the owner owns, I'm with a Jay Brian, yes.
I'm just trying to figure this out, and, um, it's old, it's not even old, it was from that block, isn't it, right?
Oh, that one we asked before is that because the previous owner, we, basically not, not like we bought this whole place from the owner, it's, they just run away. We couldn't find them at.
Nobody, nobody could find them.
We directly contacted with the landlord, the landlord said, everything inside, you can just take, and then pay me, that'd be fine.
They can't, they can't find them.
But the pre, previous owner is just, uh, run away, something like that, yeah, this happened a lot because we applying the license, we like around two or three months, because the previous owner, uh, owned the tax for the city.
They owe a lot of taxes.
And, uh, they, my lawyer came just to help us to find, said, uh, because she even couldn't find them, so she said, just like tell the city, and then the city gave us a new tax number to separate the account.
Okay. So point of, I have a question. Can they take on that debt and pay it?
I, I think they paid off for.
I think that because the landlord maybe have some contract with the previous owner, it's like, um, if you don't pay me the rent, or you just stop the, uh, the contract, or the lease earlier, it's something just like that. We had a lease with the landlord, the landlord said that we have the, the rights to just take everything in the, doing. And then we asked the, our lawyer, she said, uh, that's the problem with the landlord, with the previous owner not to ask with the, the.
I don't know the answer to the question about what debt is owed, but if there was owed, if there was money owed to the city for taxes, there would be an alert system.
Right.
If there's money owed to the, um, tax collector for, um, personal property, then they would have the right to file their new business in that personal property, which is not attached to them, so instead of doing that.
I think the, first, the money tax, the, I think the, the landlord paid already, but, uh, the city tax is owned from the restaurant owner, so the landlord.
Okay, okay, I, I, my.
Then.
My mistake, I, I was under the impression that there was money owing on this one, it's not this one, so I don't.
Okay, okay.
So, all you, you're not, all you're doing is applying to sell food there.
Well, trying to sell food, yeah.
Yeah, we try to sell food, yeah.
I got a little problem with that, so.
Captain Zalini?
Um, the fire department recently conducted an inspection, and their anseled, their hood, their extinguishers, and their firewall system are all up to date.
Thank you. From Inspection Services in the Building Department, if you don't already have it, I would get a new certificate of inspection from the Building Commissioner with updated information. And just as a, a matter of, um, um, concern, just, uh, from, just wanting to see you succeed, I, I, I don't know the logistics. I know you just mentioned something about the equipment and your attorneys, um, but we, we've seen other instances where, even agencies like the Department of Revenue have gone to seize equipment. I don't know who owns that equipment, it's not really, um, the business of inspection services per se, but, uh, I, we do wanna see you succeed, so we're just passing on that knowledge, that I, I hope you have that all squared away. And that you do have rights to use everything in there with the owner, and you only mention it because you brought it up.
Thank you.
Part of that, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the license.
I will second that mo, that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Blair, put a motion to pass the co, uh, common, common brief license to Derbek. And is, uh, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Blair, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Two, zero, motion pass. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, may I have a, ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, there is another permit we got, is the, for the building inspection.
Mm-hmm.
That before the, the name, the inspector's name is, like, Peter, I.
Lanchat.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's last name is a part for me.
Lanchat, Peter Lanchat.
Yeah, he said that he give us only the temporary for just a past inspection first, and then give us the, the final one.
Mm-hmm.
Should we just call you one more time?
Come, come to inspection services, you're welcome to call the ownership.
Okay.
You can come to inspection services, which is opposite this room, if you haven't been here already.
Okay, yeah.
In two oh nine, and one of the clerks can help you make sure that you have the.
Just make sure that's the, like, one year one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, before, we only have three months.
We, we got, we got, that's probably not ready, right?
Yeah.
We got, cause then the fire just stopped back today, there was, they, they said we were offset.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then we got a license from you guys, now, now I think we're offset, right? And then we could, we can planning on, on opening the restaurant?
That's right.
Are we, are we offset?
You have one of your other license, Judy?
Inspection Services.
The only thing, he was, the only thing he was talking about, about the building, he was.
Uh, everything we have is the house permit, and this is the Massachusetts revenue, and this is the certificate, and the service.
That's my.
Safe serve, and this is the business certificate, I think there, I think we have that, everything.
Well, no license, no.
You're dead, that's what I'm saying, do you?
Just.
You're dead, do you all want to make sure, you can stay after the meeting, but mainly what we want to say is that inspection services is open for you all as a resource.
Uh-huh.
And so you can come to inspection services across the way.
Yeah.
During the daytime, connect with one of our, of our, um.
Clerks?
Clerks.
Okay, we'll help you, if you're missing something, we'll let you.
Okay.
Seems like you have a lot there, okay?
Okay, okay.
You're not having no machines or nothing like that, right?
No.
No.
Just the first one, so we need to take care of it, be carefully.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're planning on opening on September first.
We'll be there.
We're gonna see you guys, we're gonna see you guys there.
I'll, I'll.
Hopefully, come, come try some Korean food, yeah.
Yeah, we will.
Seriously.
No, I know you're serious. I didn't, I didn't, I'm like, well, I'm. I, I.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you, guys.
Yeah, we should go eat there. We should go eat there.
Hello.
Awesome, hi.
How are you?
Good, can you please state your name and your business for the record?
Yeah, my first name's Sparrow, last name's Stajana, name of the business is Be Easy.
Okay, great. Um, and you're applying for a common vehicle license?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us a little bit about your business, please?
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a fast casual restaurant, um, comfort food, really. It's a spinoff of my existing restaurant, which has been open for twelve years, I opened it, uh, two thousand and ten in Braintree.
Okay.
Um, we have another location in Revere, which is about to have a five-year anniversary in two weeks. Uh, yeah, and I had an opportunity, I know the owner of the building on, uh, Fifteen Union. Um, he was looking for a tenant, and he knows I'm, I'm always looking for, you know, a good location to work with some good people, so he called me up and, you know, I'm in Lawrence.
Thank you. Um. Commissioner, anything else?
Uh, give me a minute.
Yeah, sure. Captain Zalini?
Um, we, we were in, um, Fifteen Union, I am, in the restaurant, that's.
It's the old Coco's Cafe.
Yes, okay.
So it's the existing space that was in there, um, just utilizing everything the way it was, it's just aesthetically different, cleaned it up. Put some, some stuff on the walls, you know, new tables, new chairs.
The fire department will, for proof, they'll, will stop by and do an inspection, the property.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I had like the, uh, the fire suppression, all that stuff inspected.
All tagged, yeah.
Yeah, it's all tagged up, yeah, yeah, okay, they did all that, they got me new fire extinguishers. Um, I do need a hood cleaning, but I was just waiting, you know, as we get closer. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Inspection Services has met with Sparrow, he came down to do his due diligence, and we had a conversation over the business. We're excited to have you in the city, uh, this was, as he said, the old Coco, uh, phrase, no, not.
Griffin.
No, Coco's Cafe, different, Coco's Cafe, um, it was, uh, I, I guess we, it reopened and we breathed new life into it a few years ago, things slowed down. So, um, Sparrow's doing the same thing, bringing it back, so we're excited for you, we're willing to work with you with, with anything you need, and like I said, you've been, uh, we've had, just met a couple weeks ago, so we're gonna continue working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Derbek, any questions?
Uh, I'm not sure about this, but one item, like we're talking about, the workers' comp, workers' comp.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, it's not like, uh.
I owe money for workers' comp?
No, you don't owe mon, you don't owe, you, uh, you're coming, ask you if you can bring the workers' comp certificate, did you bring that?
Nobody, nobody called me and asked me to bring that.
No, she told you, I was there.
But the thing is, uh, that we say we gotta bring him to the meeting, if he got approved, then he has to bring the certificate.
Yeah, just a point of innovation.
That's right.
Yeah.
That was the only issue, not, not yet.
I sub, I submitted, I submitted an affidavit of, of, uh, workers' comp. I might, I mean, I have no, I, I, nobody told me to break it, but I, but I have one.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're not open yet, I don't even have it, I don't even.
It's in order tomorrow, man.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, just a point of innovation, we did, um, again, this was sort of a last minute thing, we wanted to make sure that he had the opportunity to get on the agenda. But, um, Inspection Services, uh, is, is very supportive of, uh, collecting the paperwork afterwards, if there's anything that is needed. But we wanted to make sure he had the opportunity to, uh, get before he released.
I was just talking about discounts, it's a problem, I just didn't know what he's talking about, what he said is a problem, I just wanted to make sure, don't issues on them, uh, that, that, shouldn't issue. If it's only documentation, deny it, pardon it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
AP, AP Integro does my, uh, my workers' comp, so they do the other one in my other restaurant. And, um, as, as I was getting closer to, to finishing the cleanup and stuff in there, I, I did, uh, I did apply. And, um, as, as I was getting closer to, to finishing the cleanup and stuff in there, I, I did, uh, I did apply for it, I do have it, I don't have any employees yet, I mean, still want to recruit people, but I can, I can get you that, I do have a, a certificate of insurance issued by AP Integro.
I just wanna be clear, was at my suggestion, then we put him on the agenda, I'm, I'm, just to get him open to, uh, you know.
I helped, yeah, yeah, it's just, I just could notify his...
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can, you know.
Maybe he wasn't, he wasn't notified, it, it could be reflected.
I'm not sure if it was one of the documents that was submitted on the portal.
Mm-hmm.
You know, cause I think it asks for it. Um, I did upload it.
Okay.
Okay, so it, it should be there. Um, the only insurance that I don't have yet, cause I don't wanna be paying for them, is like the, the business insurance and all that other stuff until I get approved. Um, the other thing is, there's, um, one of the other, uh, inspectional, uh, permits that I have to apply for, I think it was like the other board of health or whatever, but it asks for our, our certificate of inspection and I haven't been inspected yet.
Yeah.
So the portal doesn't let you submit anything, like if the, if the, uh, the file portion is blank, you can't submit it. So that's why it was never submitted, when I first came in, I, I think I spoke with you a while ago, that hasn't been submitted yet, I can't submit it without attaching a certificate of inspection, but I haven't had the inspection yet. So how can I, so how can I, should I put a blank document on it and send it, or should I wait for the certificate of inspection?
Yeah, if, if I could, through the chair, just, um, as a matter of, we understand that things are overlapping and there's different agencies that, or departments, as you said, that are working, so our suggestion would be, um, if the board was so inclined to do so, if you approve this license, if there's anything else that's needed, we wouldn't wanna see any particular branch of the city hold up a license, but we will absolutely work with you, Sparrow, if there's anything you need,
Yeah.
you can come in and work with the clerks, um, if, if, if we're stuck in that spot, we need...
I just physically couldn't submit it.
Yeah, yeah.
But here it doesn't let me, so...
Yeah, this happens sometimes, we're, it, it may be a glitch with that, um, but if this is approved by the board, we can work with you, get a certificate of inspection, we'll make sure that everything goes smoothly for you.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Alright.
Alex.
I got that, then.
I'm good.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Blair, put a motion to approve a common vehicle license for Be Easy on Fifteen Union Street, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Blair, have you voted?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, yes. Motion passed. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
I want to be waiting for you, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Our next meeting?
Next meeting gets ready to set up for us for seven at five thirty. And, uh, I like to say that that's gonna be a Wednesday anyways, right? And maybe that Friday or Saturday, we could bring the rings to go out.
That would be great.
And, um, whoever wants to go, you know, like, I hope you're there. And, you know, the thing I'm worried about mostly is these places where there are over a hundred people in there and, and the fire watch people, that I, I understand always keeping good records on that, so, I'd like to send the fire department to come just...
Sure.
And if we have to, we'll set up a class for them to make sure they get all certified and everything else, you know? But that's one of the most important things, with some of these clubs are packed.
Okay.
And, um, I don't wanna see it go behind the head, you know, and the other thing, I, 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 I can, I will check into it. And make sure all licenses are present, uh, any other violations, we'll notify, we'll, we'll check with them when we get there, but, um, hopefully, maybe, maybe night, that, that, I think they'll be there Friday. And we will do a self slide if everybody approves.
Okay, we can set up that with the inspectors, uh, just a point of information to you, Mr. Commissioner, you said five thirty, we had six o'clock on the agenda, it might have been something that you decided before, but I just wanted to clarify.
They, they said...
Yeah.
Because they have a meeting at six o'clock at seven.
So we're agreeing on their...
So if we start at five thirty, maybe we can finish by, uh, six forty-five, before they start there.
Sure. I, I don't know what the agenda looks like, but as a matter of history, again, whatever the commission wants to do is fine.
We, we, we got only one hour from right now.
Okay, we, we have traditionally started at six and we, I, I can't remember the last time ever we went over seven, it's very normal for the council to have a meeting at seven. Again, you're welcome to do whatever you want, I just wanted to point that we had six o'clock on this agenda, so for purposes of confusing the public, uh, which is not a problem, we will post a new agenda with the time. But just, we, we careful that if you do like five thirty.
Okay.
So if, if it's five to, we get out there early, we're done, we're just done. Oh, we can keep this at six o'clock.
We can.
It's, it's up to you.
Well, we have an issue with this, when you see the space, we're seeing that the city ho, the city council is usually meet at seven P. M.
Yeah, they typically meet at seven, there's a lot of these.
Yeah.
They, they're gonna give us the first, the third, Wednesday every month, you know?
Okay. So I think they're giving you the discretion to start early, but for what it's worth, we've always started at six and we can finish. Again, it doesn't matter, it is, it's completely up to you, I just don't want you to feel like you, you pressured to come in at five thirty with jobs and that type of thing.
I don't work though.
So, for you.
You worked for a long time though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's keep at six P. M., then if we, this won't, will not interfere with any other meetings, I'm hoping?
Yeah.
Okay, it won't, okay.
So, six o'clock then?
Okay, six o'clock.[1741.11]